Good evening, everybody. Stand for the Project Leaders, please.
Project leaders, certify of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. This is part of the job I hate that I can't, that we lose people in this city. Like to have a moment of silence for Officer Ted Brown. Was at police office for 29 years. He was a constable at the, down at the shore, and he also was part of the Leadberry Committee. And also Mary Ann Morrell, who also was, worked in the City Corks Office, the city of West Haven. And Natalie DeRosa, who voted her time and volunteered her time in many, many projects with the Fire Force Committee, Carousel Committee, the Italian Street Festival Committee, and she was the Italian of the year also. So please, for a few minutes, moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, our public session.
I'm going to take a roll call.
Oh yeah, please, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Councilman at large, present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, Council at large, here.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Ronald Quagliani, Council at large, here.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoskies absent. Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite.
Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarelli is absent. Councilman Mitchell Galagnano.
Councilman Mitchell Galagnano, Fourth District, present.
Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton, present.
Councilwoman Kathy Tucker.
Councilwoman Kathy Tucker, Seventh District, present.
Councilman Victor Boris.
Councilman Victor Boris, Fifth District, present.
Councilman Robert Bruno.
Councilman Robert Bruno, Ninth District, present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, Tenth District, present.
And Chairman Peter Mazzaro.
And Chairman Peter Mazzaro, President, Sixth District, Councilman. Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome.
Now, let's start with public session. Anybody like to come up and address their console? Would anybody like to come up and address the console? For a third time, would anyone, yes, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening, everyone. Barry Lee Cohen, 232 Morgan Lane. I'm just going to read you something very quickly because it really brought an idea to my mind a couple of weeks ago. I mean, it even registered. There was an opinion article. I'm just going to read you a small excerpt of it because I think we have a great opportunity here in the coming months for West Haven and for access and accountability. This was written by Justin Silverman, and I'm just going to read it very quickly. During the early months of COVID, governors in New England states issued executive orders allowing municipalities to meet the online so that, we could meet online so that the public could attend remotely. The democratic benefits of this arrangement quickly became evident. According to a public official, 2020 study, the changes made a lot easier for residents who have other things to do, to be heard, people with family obligations, elder care or childcare issues. The executive orders that prompted these changes, however, have been, have since expired. New England states have resorted to patchwork, as you know, throughout the cities. Some cities do hybrid meetings. Some cities only do in-person meetings. And so, because that requirement has been lifted. And so, it got me thinking that, you know what, we know, and thank goodness and great that we're making these upgrades to this council room, to the Harriet North Room, to the third floor conference room, that we're making these wonderful upgrades for streaming, et cetera. But you know, I mean, you know, we have to think of it as more as just opening, you know, we have to think of it more than just an AV upgrade, you know, audiovisual upgrade, or live streaming capabilities. What we really should take this as an, as an opportunity to open up communications. And the reason why I say that is, this council and future councils, to help make a remark on future councils and administrations, have an important opportunity to expand access for public comments. This is actually a crowd tonight. I've been here before. There's only been a couple of people here, you know, and we can make excuses, the weather or whatever, but there hasn't been enough people here, for whatever reasons, okay? By allowing citizens to speak, may call it a hybrid meeting. We know that we have a Zoom account. You're basically doing the upgrades in these rooms anyway. We have a monitor in this room. That these are very simple changes, that we're on the 90, we're on the five yard line, and we're going to put these great changes in. And now we have an opportunity to just upgrade that. And that could be three months from now, six months from now. Amend your council rules. Once everything's in place, you know, all the equipment's in place, and we're ready to go, add that on there, change your council rules so that people can, can, if they're home or otherwise, be able to do it. Of course, you wish you could mute me right now, but if they're getting unruly, you just mute them, you know, until it's their turn, they raise their hand to speak. But you know, to be honest with you, you know, this is no different. I'm not saying that we should not still read the emails that come in because people may not like to speak, that you get to read emails when people come in. I'm not saying that we, we expand the five-minute rule. You keep the five-minute rule, but you expand it to those that are on the screen, like a Zoom meeting. So they're seeing us, we're seeing them. It'd be a wonderful thing. And you know, it's, it's also one of the things that, this is an opportunity, maybe a small opportunity, but a very, very, very important opportunity that we, as leaders of this city, every council member, any current or future administration, that we will be able to show that we care about access. And more importantly, we care about accountability, and we care about transparency. And doing something as easy as this that we've already invested in makes a lot of sense, in my humble opinion. Now, most importantly, excuse me, this is going to build a foundation, at least I believe. It's going to be the beginning of building a foundation to slowly regain a level of confidence. And yes, I'm going to use the old word, optimism, in our government because as we all know, we've had a tough couple of years. And doing something like this goes a long way. This is going to be a new day for West Haven. It's the way you're going to start it. I know this will already be towards the, the end of, of your terms, or three quarters of your terms. And to do something like this would be a wonderful thing for every city resident. You know, we have those that are elderly. We have those that have mobility problems, those that are senior citizens, those that have travel problems, childcare problems, all these things. You know, life happens, but they still want to participate. And this is a very easy and logical way to participate. Let's make the best of our investment. It also will allow elected officials to be present as required by the city charter, not represented by others in a given administration. You can't make it, we get it, but we can still see you on the screen, you can still contribute. It's your responsibility. As for the implementation period, like I said, it could be once you get the equipment in and installed, you feel comfortable with it. You know, and what you'd end up doing, I believe, and you guys are more expert, well, we're experts at this, is you amend the council rules. At that point, you amend the council rules in terms of public comment. I hope you consider that. I know I'm talking fast. They have five minutes. Thank you for your time. God bless you all. Appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else would like to come up and address the council? Yes, Mrs. Parsons?
Did it?
No, I did it. I did it. I had 15 seconds.
I wish, you should read mine. I can't go that fast. Robin Parsons, 129 Bellevue Avenue. Okay. I listened to the, the waste pilot program meeting on March 15th and was surprised to hear the pink bag program for textile recycling had vanished. In February two years ago, I was told by Corporation Council that we seem to have an agreement with our refuse carrier, and we should have a completed signed contract today or Monday. Nothing came of it. This is similar to nothing, nothing ever coming of the Solar For All Program, initiating the portfolio management system for energy use tracking we were prepared to implement in 2019, and those pesky no smoking stencils on the regulation signs on the boardwalk and all the other parks that never have been installed. The reason I bring this up is because the common factor is lack of operational accountability. Because accountability is my thing, by the way. Barry, thank you. Since we have been under MARB supervision, there's been increased attention given to our financials, which is good. But without operational accountability, we're never going to be able to make real progress. There are countless examples of lack of accountability to systems and procedures, many of which actually can be done by volunteers. We haven't posted municipal solid waste data on our website. We haven't given updates on the wildlife guards. We haven't updated the city sustainability page. Or how about tracking our progress in implementing the strategies of our P O C D? Councilman Quagliani noted some years ago that West Haven has a charter, and the charter governs much of what can and cannot be done. What it doesn't offer is a method for accountability. For instance, under the description of the mayor's duties in the charter, Section 3 says, "At the end of each fiscal year, the head of each department, board, or commission shall file with the mayor a complete report of the operations, both physical and financial, of such department, border, or commission during the preceding fiscal year." Sorry. "Within three months after the end of the fiscal year, the mayor shall have a summary of these reports prepared for distribution to the city council and taxpayers and for public inspection at reasonable times." When I checked at the city clerk's office recently, I was told no such operational reports appear to exist. How is it possible for the mayor not to be held accountable for something the charter clearly requires? It isn't up to the city council to be the watchdog on whether the city is doing what it should, but there needs to be some method of, or mechanism for, for doing this. Likewise, we are spending ARPA funding for parks on an ad hoc basis without public input and without appropriate guidance. Things are being done in city open space that the public, apologies Leo, has neither discussed nor vetted. At the same time, multiple initiatives identified in our P O C D, things we're supposed to be doing, are stalled. In 2018, planning and zoning prioritized recommended strategies to include things like preparing a redevelopment strategy for Route 1, creating a continuous walking biking path along the shore, and making welcoming gateways. Have we done any of these? Have we gotten any reports on the progress? After all the times that've come before you, it's fair to ask why I bother. I'm not running for office. I don't want any special project approved. I'm doing it because I want better things for West Haven, and I don't hear other folks raising issues of operational accountability. I want to ask you to please stake out this territory for ourselves and not have to be dragged to it unwilling by the MARB because that's what they're going to do. I understand council members' hands are tied with respect to many options. But please consider that if you, if you do not demand accountability from our leaders, you are letting down the people you represent. Westies are proud of being able to pull together to improve our community, but without your support for accountable leadership, their efforts lead to no lasting improvements. I hope you really think about this, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Parsons. Would anyone else like to come up and address the council? Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Third and final time, does anybody else want to come up and address the council? Public session is over at 7:14. Regular meeting will open at 7:14. Yes, Councilman Donovan.
Excuse me, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda under Public Lands Committee Communication. Man, that was a quick five minutes. I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda under Public Lands Committee Communication E from Corporation Council Lee Tierney regarding the potential sale, lease, or transfer of city-owned property located at 20 Helm Street and 281 Front Avenue.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have discussion. This is just to add to the agenda, right?
Correct.
Forget I have any discussion.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. That Communication E will be added to the agenda tonight.
And I'm going to place that for everybody's knowledge under, after legislative matters in the committee section. Perfect.
We good?
We're good.
Okay. Now, I'd like to have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 13, 2023.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilor and Bruno, seconded by Hamilton.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
All right, I need to show of hands of who's abstaining. So I got... So we got Mazzaro, Garthwaite, Boris, Johnstone. Anyone else?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. Thank you.
Motion passes by majority. The approval of the minutes for the special meeting for March 13, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Donovan, seconded by O'Connor.
Any discussion? Any changes? Any abstentions?
Well, all in favor?
All in favor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
So we have Mazzaro, Garthwaite, Johnstone, and Boris. Ah, yes.
Yeah, seven.
Yes.
Motion passes by majority. Approval of the minutes for the special meeting, sustainability committee on March 15, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Hamilton, seconded by Donovan.
Any discussion? Any changes? Commissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Okay, so we have Mazzaro, Tucker, Boris, Johnstone. Anyone else? Okay.
Motion passes by majority. And the approval of the minutes for the special meeting on March 16, 2023.
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion by Donovan, seconded by O'Connor.
Any discussion? Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Mazzaro, Boris.
I wasn't here on that one.
And Bruno. Anyone else?
We run this practical.
All right.
Okay, that's passed. All right, now, give the clerk to read them.
Okay, so we have before us Communication A from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment refunds for March 2023, which will be followed with tonight's minutes. Communication B from Leo Kelly, the Tree Warden, regarding naming a 15-acre city-owned open space land located at 285 Platte Avenue, Narrow Point Park, being assigned to the Housing Planning and Recreation Committee, Chairwoman Tucker. Communication C from Mayor Nancy R. Rossi regarding the reappointment of David Carr, 29 Lake Street, West Haven, to the Inland Wetlands Agency. Mr. Carr's reappointment would become effective immediately and expire on July 31, 2027, being assigned to the Personnel and Civil Service Committee, and that would be Chairman Quagliani. And Communication D from Mayor Nancy R. Rossi regarding the reappointment of Chester Zen, Zen, Zentreski?
Zantarski.
Zantarski? Thank you. 490 Jones Hill Road, West Haven, to the Zoning Board of Appeals Panel of Alternance. Mr. Zantarski's reappointment would become effective immediately and expire on January 31, 2025, being assigned to the Personnel and Civil Service Committee, Chairman Quagliani. And we have our new communication, which is Communication E from Corporation Council Lee Tierney regarding the potential sale, lease, or transfer of city-owned property located at 20 Helm Street and 281 Front Avenue, being assigned to the Public Lands Committee, Chairman Donovan. being assigned to the Public Lands Committee, Chairman Donovan. And that concludes the communications for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Stacy. Committee meetings, let's see. Councilmen as a whole, we're not going to have ARPA updates because Ken is not here tonight. We'll take it to the Finance Committee.
Okay. The panel is seven twenty. The Committee on Finance is in session. Members present are Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilman Quagliani, Councilwoman Akra Bali, myself acting as chair, and absent is Councilwoman Hosky. And we are holding Communication I from the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda. But we can talk about updates. I see David Taylor, you're here. Would you like to approach the podium for us, please? Good evening.
Good evening.
Want to give us any updates on the budget review?
The budget, you know, we're submitted to the MARB, and we're going to be reviewing that with them on Thursday. So really no updates at this time, and we'll be talking publicly next week.
Oh, yeah, okay, did I say?
We're talking about this current year budget.
Oh, this year's budget. You're talking about, okay, I'm s...
I'm sorry.
I did not understand you. Yeah, so if I could just read, if you'd like me to read my remarks into the record, I'd be happy to do so. So we've got eight months past, which makes us two-thirds through the year. Our revenue to date is one hundred thirty-seven million dollars, which is eighty-one and a half percent of the budget. Our property taxes are currently ninety-five point six percent received. Real estate is doing great, right on target with the last year, so we expect everything to go well there. Motor vehicle collections are lagging. They've been declining over the last few years. I think two major causes. Number one, the state changed the registration renewal to three years instead of two, which is kind of a funny reason for them to decline, but anyway. And then also, you know, we haven't had any enforcement since COVID. And I would just like to suggest it might be a good time to have some. You know, a few wheel locks on a few cars to, you know, keep people real moving until they pay their taxes might be a good idea. In fact, you could put one on mine. I'm all paid up. Just seeing one sometimes will get people to pay their taxes, so. So funds received, we've got a lot of money on hand. We've got the ARPA funds, our taxes have come in. We're doing pretty well in our bank accounts. I've been managing them into our interest-bearing accounts as much as possible and watching the day-to-day cash management, making sure we have money to pay our bills. And we are well on our way to a million dollars in investment income this year against a budget of fifty thousand. So that's really helping our bottom line, and I think it's going to be a driver of a surplus this year as we move forward. State and other funding is as budgeted and slightly faster, and then we did get a municipal revenue share this year, almost a million dollars more than was budgeted. Preview of the budget that I gave out last week, there, that's not repeated because the governor has not put that in his proposal. Building permit fees are back on target, and they continue to be back on target. And everything else is sort of net below budget. These are all minor things. You've gone, I've gone over the major revenue items. Our expenditures are at sixty-four percent. Remember, we're sixty-six percent through the year, so pretty much on target for the year. I think we're going to spend on budget. However, there are some areas, and I'm not prepared at this time, and I will be requesting some budget transfers sometime in the next month or two. We are, because of the way we budget salaries at full, we do not budget all the overtime. We're understaffed in certain areas, and obviously in the areas of public safety, we cannot be understaffed. So people take extra shifts, and it drives up our overtime. So I'm going to have to shift some stuff around so that we can stay on target. Sewer and Fire District are on target. Not really aware of anything at this time that can have an adverse impact on the year. You would have noticed in the budgets that things are pretty much on target there as well. The only adverse financial impact is Chestnut Street, where I live. And, yeah, which I was happy to drive home the other day on my own road. But anyway, that really, and it still continues to be around the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar range that was reported to earlier. And that's it, thank you.
Anybody on the committee have any questions?
Mr. Taylor, thanks for coming tonight. Just a couple of things. So I agree with you on the book program. So if it's something that the council needs to authorize...
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, feel free to send it over to us. I mean, I think in the past, you've put it out to bid, and then you've, you know, you've, I think you brought it to us, and we've selected an appropriate company. So I agree with you, the problem is, is that we went from two to three years, so there's no incentive sometimes to pay your car taxes till every three years now. And I think, you know, enforcement's key. Some folks, they see that we're enforcing it, they'll voluntarily comply when maybe they wouldn't have if we weren't. So I agree with you there. You mentioned transfers, so I'm happy to hear that. We've had lots of discussions over the last couple of years about us seeing transfers before the budget goes negative. So I'd like to make sure that, you know, it started out that way, and then, I'm not sure what happened, it kind of fell off a little bit. And then let's hope that we see that again, right? So by the charter, right, you've come to us first, right?
Yeah, I would be doing that right now, but I have other things I need to get done. It's sort of a little bit lower on the priority.
Vouchers versus purchase orders. Where are we with doing away with the voucher system?
We still have a number of vouchers in the system. I'm pushing every day to get additional purchase orders written. A lot of our repetitive payments are still using vouchers, whereas, or ended up embarrasses me to say this, or we write the purchase order after we have the invoice, which is of no use. You might as well do a voucher, seriously. So working with purchasing, working with some of the other departments to get annual purchase orders written for those companies with which we have contracts to the contract amount and up to the budgeted amount, of course, no more than the budgeted amount. In fact, the nice thing to report is we have turned on the feature in UNIS that will not allow us to write a purchase order that over spends the budget, which I think is a huge step forward. We do have some other things that we can do, and I would like to see us do over the next six months.
And it's Whittlesley, right? They're on site here, and how, so I would imagine that they're gathering a lot more information at this point than they're giving. So I would imagine that that takes some time.
It does take some time, and as you know, they work for the MARB, and so they're, you know, they're going to report to them first. However, they've allowed us to review some of their draft observations as well as recommendations, and I haven't seen one I don't agree with, so.
So it's a collaborative relationship?
I think, yes, very collaborative. I think they're doing a really good job. You know, there's, we're bound to bust heads a little bit, you know, here and there. However, overall, I think they're being very professional, doing a very good job, and I think they're seeing the same things I've seen.
And just one item on your budget run. So it's kind of a legacy issue, but typically we see... Typically, I see overtime, right? That's always trends in the negative. And, you know, we've talked in the past before you about strategies to keep that in check. And, you know, I guess my question is, if, my question, my comment is, is that if in fact overtime is funded appropriately, then we should, then it should be what it is. If it's not funded appropriately, then we should reflect that in next year's budget so we don't come across this again.
We have a little bit of an issue there. We have, we have, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we can't change. And in fact, I'm happy to change the way to do this. But what we currently do is we budget for full staff. And we do budget at the top step because that protects us against, you know, any issues that we might have through the year, and frankly, covers our overtime when you think about it. If we are going to budget fully staffed, we can't also budget the overtime because that would just set the mill rate too high, because we'd be double budgeting for a certain time. So we could take an approach like an open items reserve and push that to overtime, certainly something we could do. I'm open to that. It's just the way we've always budgeted.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, is what happens when we're fully staffed and we have overtime that goes over budget, then we have no reserve for that.
So we do budget overtime in certain departments where we know we're going to have overtime, which is just the nature of the beast. And, you know, knock on wood, we've done okay year after year after year, and we're doing, we're doing well this year as well. We, you, as you get a chance to review the budgets that were distributed, you will see more overtime in the budget. And we are, you know, taking a realistic approach to it, I think. However, you know, I'm sure there's room for improvement.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to open it up to the council. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
We've been lucky this year with the snow, right? How much money did we save from snowing?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. It's, I don't think it's hundreds of thousands, it's tens of thousands. But we did have a very lucky year.
Yes, we got a lot. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Thompson?
Random quick question, because I know Councilman Quagliani has asked a couple of times, and I know you're just sworn in and things are changing a little bit. Do you have any idea of when we're going to get an updated rans list on the open ones and ones, money we're expected to come in, ones we've applied for? Because it seems over the last couple of months, there's been a lot of confusion with that. And now that Mr. Coulter's gone, it's kind of like the never-ending story that we can't get an answer, so.
I'm going to, I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to make a note and go follow up with that. I thought I saw a work in progress of that the other day. I'm not sure where it is, and I'll have to find out who was championing it. I know, you know, obviously it wasn't Mr. Coulter, but I believe it was somebody outside of the finance area that was doing that. But I'll follow up on that.
Much appreciated.
No problem. Thank you. Yep.
Anybody else?
Do you want to jump on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor, the reason why I've been asking is, is, well, I recognize, you know, nobody, nobody likes to use one-time revenue to set a mill rate, but one-time revenue can be used for capital projects. I think Hartford does that, and so if we have, if we have grant money where we haven't drawn down that money yet, and we are expecting, you know, five million dollars in fiscal year twenty-four, well, then we could earmark that towards capital projects and back off on the bonding. So that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, if you'd like, I could respond. We do have low-set monies that haven't been drawn down, which really need to fund those projects that are already done. I think our largest opportunity are the grants we don't know about, the grants that we haven't searched out, that we have not applied for. Our Grants Department, although it has grown, lacks people at the top. And obviously, Mr. Coulter left. And I think we have an opportunity, assuming we can find somebody, because it's a tough market, to find somebody who's really great at finding grants, writing grant applications, and making sure they come in. There are a lot of opportunities out there. I'm not, I'm not the person, unfortunately, who knows how to do that, but we need to find somebody, I agree with you. And that way, we can reduce the bonding. There's a great example in the budget. We have the outfall pipes at the sewer plant. Outflow, sorry. I'm not a sewer guy. Anyway, it's a major capital replacement, thirty-three, thirty-five million dollars, I believe. And that's just in twenty-four. I think there's some other spending up to it. We are, we need to apply for the FEMA grant. And I believe that that's in place, and we're trying to get that money. And I thank goodness for Abdul, who's a great asset to our team, and he's championing that. So, you know, we could get seventy-five percent of that thing funded, or we could clean water fund, get twenty percent of it funded, and end up with a heck of a lot more bill, a huge payment.
I mean, I agree, we need to chase all the grants that we could. I'm specifically referring to a grant that was approved and that the city did the work, paid it out of their general fund, and never drew down the money to reimburse the city. So I would, and I'm guessing, but I would imagine if we went back five or six years and we looked at that, I bet you there's a good pile of money that, for whatever reason, we haven't drawn down yet.
Yeah, I understand. And one of our, well, Gisella, one of our employees in the Grants Department was diligently going after those monies. Over the last several months, for whatever reason, a lot of the ARPA accounting and administrative work sort of got placed on her desk and distracted her from that very valuable activity, as you're saying. We are, we've been taking steps over the last two weeks to try to pull that off of her desk, absorb some of it into the Purchasing Department, and looking for ways to absorb it into the Finance Department. Still maintaining the integrity and the tracking and all the important things that have to happen with grant money, but supporting her outside of her activity so that she can spend her time on that valuable activity.
It's good to hear. Thank you.
Anyone else? I thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know if Lee is there? Have we seen him?
I haven't seen him.
Yeah, Lee.
No. I guess there's no MARB updates and no police pension updates. So...
With the MARB, we didn't have the meeting last week.
Okay.
We're having it this Thursday morning, so I'll have an update for the next meeting.
Okay. All right, with that being said, the Committee on Finance is closed at seven thirty-seven. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I will go to Housing and Plant.
Okay, it's time to seven thirty-eight. And the Committee on Housing, Planning, and Recreation is in session.
Members present are Councilpersons Donovan, Hamilton, Gallegno, Johnstone, and Tucker. Tucker, acting, myself acting as chair. And we have us before, we have before us tonight Communication B, which is a proposal concerning naming a fifteen-acre city-owned open space land located at 285 Platt Avenue, Narrow Point Park. And I think Mr. Leo Kelly is here with us tonight. Do you want to come over to the council?
Can we just bring this out first?
Oh, sorry. I'd like to bring it out, favorably.
So moved.
City Council, Council Chair Peter Masaro, thanks for the opportunity to present my proposal, which is basically that, which just to name a parcel of land away from the street address, which I think, believe now is 285 Platt Avenue, and just to name it Narrow Point Park. That's my proposal to have that done.
It seems very, very simple.
Yeah, Mike, we could, but I'm here tonight to kind of make any more, give you any more information as to that particular parcel so that you can bring it back to your constituents if there were questions. I'm kind of the lead on this, that parcel of land, and I just want to give myself, make myself available to the council either with a personal call or an email to me with questions about it. But my simple proposal right now is to initiate that name change.
Okay, so the only question I guess I have is that, is there any historical perspective that you might know about or be able to share with us that might be associated with the naming of that parcel?
For me personally, I can, I have done research on it. For me personally, I can, I have done research on it, and I'll just give you how, why I'm standing here right now, and a short little synopsis of it all. The short answer is yes. Historical, archaeological, pre-historical, actually, is the reference to that area. And when the city acquired it from the state over twenty years ago, it, with certain stipulations to keep it open to the public and access them, and that's what we're working on now. But in about two thousand and four, there were some studies done on that personal, on that parcel that linked it to inhabitants, people, fifteen hundred B.C. Fifteen hundred B.C. That's three thousand years ago. And I'm not an archaeologist, I'm an arborist, but the Yale and Peabody Museum in the state of Connecticut did an extensive study on that parcel of land, and made a report about their findings. And quite interesting. And they used, and the term Narrow Point tradition identifies the time period that that area was most likely inhabited by hunter and gatherers, when they were actually hunting like mastodons and giant beavers. It's not the only spot. It's historically, it goes back to crossing from northern Asia into Alaska, across this landmass that was there at one time, and, Mike, following migrating herds and establishing these, these places of gather. It's not unique. It's unique to West Haven, for sure. And there are other areas in Connecticut that have been identified similarly, and identified to be a part of a certain period of time. So, that Narrow Point, the artifacts that were discovered by the archaeological, archaeological team from the Peabody Museum, identified the period by the tools that they had. That's how they identified who was actually there. And some of the artifacts that they did uncover had a narrow point, and they were hunting tools, they were chopping tools, cleaning meat tools. So, they said, well, that identifies the late archaic period of people, prehistoric, paleo-people, they actually was the term. And that was in early woodland, that, that developed different tools. So, with that in mind, I thought to define, not, not, not to re-identify it other than an address, or, you know, down from Wisherts or across from Big John's Deli, or, you know, and that. And in all due respect to the new residents of our, of our city, to start identifying ourselves a little bit with other assets that we have, and name a park that would draw an interest, so they would establish a, an inquisitive mind. And so, that's where the term Narrow Point came from. This is a small peninsula, too, so I could just call it a peninsula. But I think that is exactly my thought, and it's not my own. It's been established through Google, a lot of information on it.
That's fascinating. Very.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's for West Haven, being a lifelong resident. I mean, a lot of our parks are named after people, and our streets are named after people. And I did have a resident one time, or a new visitor to our, you know, it was, I just couldn't describe where exactly to go, or without mentioning some old landmarks that just aren't around anymore. And I think it'd be a good opportunity to re-identify, not re-identify our town, our town has always been a good destination, but start to poke around a little bit in our forest, and bring it away from our beaches just a little bit. That people, I mean, we've had British land on our shores, we've had battles, we've had names, streets of names of heroes, of British generals, so I just think it's in line for that.
Yes.
Yeah, Leo, I know we talk all the time. I think it's great, naming that. I didn't know why, where you got that name from. I know you just didn't, just didn't pop into your head in that aspect, but I'm glad you gave us some information on why you wanna make it, or name it Narrow Point, which I think is a great, great idea. And I, I know, once it gets going, the public will be using that as a, as a walkthrough, and just, hopefully, people aren't gonna be digging things up, but we'll be able to walk through, and I know they're gonna have pathways and stuff like that. And again, I'm okay with the name change, I just, do you know if the park and rec commissioners know about it, or have discussed this? Because if not, I'm going to the meeting Monday, and I will.
Um, I have not talked to them directly, no. This is all through, I work under Commissioner McCarthy in Department of Public Works. And I got involved because he's asked to make the area safe for people, as we announce this, and start to make it more accessible. There's a lot of hazard trees and defective, hurtful stuff in there that we're trying to clean up. So, no, I haven't, Gary. I've talked to any park department.
I can bring that forward to them, but I, I think it's a great thing. I really do. And like you said, it's, yes, we have great beaches and stuff, but the history that we have here in West Haven is, it's nice to bring that forward.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're always looking out. And I wanna start looking up. And we have some great
Absolutely.
Great other projects going out that I will present to you as they progress. But that's my one proposal for tonight.
Thank you for that. I'm all set.
Does anyone else have a question?
Hey, Leo, just kinda shooting down the road here. We do have this history, and you and I have had these discussions, where we've put these parks in, in the past, and it's like, great, we did it. And there's no maintenance plan. So, I'm sitting here, as concern is, I'm not asking for an answer now, but I think, I know I would, I can't speak on anyone else in the council, but I'm pretty sure it would be kinda nice if, if you're the lead on this thing, we got somewhere down the road, as we get into this, of what is the plan for this property? I mean, fifteen acres, I mean, I know it's not plainfield, but...
Well, that's another project that's, this is interesting.
But at the same token, I, I think there, there are gonna be some concerns of, okay, it's another thing on our list that, if we, if we struggle to maintain now, how are we gonna maintain it? I agree with the name. I was gonna suggest, if that didn't go through, we can name it Arrowhead, but that's just me personally. So...
Well, it's not, it's not that, I mean, I agree, and I'm optimistic, that it's gonna work. That's all I can really come out and say to you, council members. I'm optimistic, I have eternal hope that the people will, through education, realize what we have here and take it upon themselves. We're not gonna depend on the, the mowers and the things, that'll be nice, but my mission is to bring this to the people of West Haven, that try to have them understand what we have and protect it themselves, so, and I'll be leading that. But the, I, I agree, and there's our other projects that are going on, but I'm optimistic about this particular piece.
And, and I appreciate that, I do. So, I, I'm just, being on the committee, I'm asking if somewhere, maybe summertime, when the thing, when ARPA dies down a little bit, and I know, I walked through there a couple of weeks ago, there, yeah, the, the trees are, it's something else in there that, you know, it's lack of maintenance. You and I have had this discussion.
Well, it was just let
And overgrowth.
It was just not ever, and it was only through the efforts of the Department of Public Works that, it has been sitting for a while with the stipulations that the state of Connecticut had made on that parcel, by, by whatever the transaction was, purchase, that we do something, and to make it public enjoyment. But it's not too enjoyable right now, because there's hazards and there's threats to the public, which Commissioner McCarthy has asked me to, you know, preclude. But it's pretty much going to be a progress that will be safe and secure when finally opened, and renamed, hopefully.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, sure, thanks, Councilman.
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah, again, I think we should have a public session on this, only because some people may want input, and I think in a positive way. You're gonna get negative, but it is what it is, right? But on the council, I think I know a little negativity coming at us. Suggestions on things that aren't gonna be too outlandish, maybe a short little history thing throughout the walkway or something, down the road. I'm not saying something now, but something down the road. But to your point, I think tonight, the main concern is change, is getting it, getting it named, which
It's part of my plan.
I have no problem with that. I just think down the road, so I, I don't know if this is something that maybe have a public session on, on it, but I don't know how that works, if that's what we do.
So, I have to ask my question, because what we're asking here tonight about the naming of this, but are we asking for input from the public about naming? Or, because you're taking it back to...
Yeah, maybe, maybe we just stick with the naming it right now, so later on, maybe a public session on that.
About what?
About, you know, maybe what they'd like to see in the park, or some, I'm not saying a placate, but something, you know.
This is all just about the naming.
I mean, it's the public's.
But if there's certain deed stipulations that were made within it that make us walk in line to making, making it accessible to the public, but not, not putting past what the deed stipulations had stated, public enjoyment might just be, as, as, as I have stated, a passive recreational experience, which will be minimal intrusion in the area.
We can work on that.
So, that sounds like a very different conversation.
Yeah, yeah, different.
A very different basis, right?
Yes, ma'am.
For a later meeting, you know. But, but right now, this is just about naming the space.
Correct. I'm dropping the gun.
So, we're gonna stick to the script.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm just excited about
I mean, this is fascinating.
This is different and refreshing.
It is. I appreciate it.
I'd like to hear about West Haven. This is the beauty of West Haven, and all the things that are great about it, that we need to be talking about more, so.
I think so, and I'm, I'm trying to take that for the last several years, trying to work on that for us and, and your representation that you make for the city, and just keep moving on, so.
So, can I just re-ask you a question about taking it to, taking it to the commission? Not related to the name?
Take it to the commissioner about the name change, just naming it, because there's just no name right now.
We can do that, though, right?
Right?
But I'm not sure that's what I'm asking, because if that's the case, and, and we, it rests with us, then we can vote tonight. But if they have to weigh in...
Well, we can vote tonight, and I think we can add to the, you know, I don't think the park, but maybe, I don't know, I think the park, Rick.
I'm, I should say, I have done some research on that, and with our deed restriction with the state and it, because of the stipulations, the, the name park doesn't necessarily bring it in as a park underneath the, got underneath the umbrella of our, our
Right.
West Haven City. Other cities have specifications about it, but what I, my research, as humble as it is, doesn't really put that, that on it, because it would also incur money, you know, they'd have to budget out money for it and all, I would suppose. So, but we're, what I've been told in the research that I've done in my networking is that the name change itself, but I welcome.
No, again, what if you just make it Narrow Point, and leave out the park, or you wanna make it, do we wanna add that park? I don't know.
I'd, I, I think the name Narrow Point Park would, would sum up what I'm trying, my own proposal is, so.
I'm good with it.
Alright.
I'm good.
Okay.
Just wanted to cover all my, all the bases, that's all.
I have, yeah, I'll be happy to talk to you more about it.
Absolutely.
Alright, any further discussion? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman.
Any further discussion? From the, from the committee? You can open it up to the rest of the council. You have any?
I'm, I'm confused. For example, when I first got on the council, Sandy Point Park came on, and they were changing the name of that area to Sandy Point. So, we had a, we had a public hearing the week after, and then we voted on it after the public hearing. Is that what we have to do, or can we just do that, do, change the name tonight?
May I?
Uh huh.
The reason, the reason why we had a public hearing, you already had a park named Sandy Point, we are changed it to, what was his name?
Sandy Point, Overland Park.
Right, and we changed it to a different name. This is a piece of property that has no name on it. We're naming it Part of Gecko. This is property that the state gave to the city twenty years ago, which the city didn't do nothing with it for twenty years. Now, they got the money from ARPA to start to clean it up a little, to make a park out of it. So, that's why we got, we could name it tonight as a park.
Thank, now I get it.
Any additional discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
The committee. Right? On the committee, yes. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the Committee on Housing Planning and Recreation is now closed at seven fifty-four. And the motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, City Council.
Thank you.
Yep.
I would do Personnel and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your Committee on Personnel and Civil Service is in session at seven fifty-five P.M. Members present, Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Bruno, Councilwoman O'Connor, and myself, Councilman Quagliani acting as chair. Before us is Communication C, from Mayor Nancy R. Rossi regarding the reappointment of David Carr, twenty-nine Lake Street, West Haven, to the Inland Wetlands Agency. I'd like to take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Approved by Councilwoman Hamilton, seconded by Councilwoman O'Connor. Any discussion within the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next up is Communication D, from Mayor Nancy R. Rossi regarding the reappointment of Chester Zantarski, four ninety Jonesville Road, West Haven, to the Zoning Board of Appeals Panel of Alternates. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Bruno, seconded by Councilwoman Hamilton. Is there any discussion in the committee? I see none. Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Mr. Chairman, your Committee on Personnel and Civil Service is closed at seven fifty-six P.M.
Great job. Thank you, Councilman Quagliani. Now, we'll go to Legislative Matters, Councilman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Time is seven fifty-six. Committee on Legislative Matters is in session. Members present, Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilman Gallegno, Councilman, Councilman Boras, Victor Boras, Councilwoman Acabeli. We have before us tonight Communication H, from January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, Councilman Gartwood regarding S.P.B.S. proposed hunting and trapping ordinance. At this time, I would ask us to withdraw this motion.
That communication has been withdrawn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The time is now seven fifty-eight. Legislative Matters is closed.
Now, we have public lands. Public lands is next.
Wait, missed it?
Nope, it's right after Legislative Matters. He's up next.
Oh. Alright, Mr. Donovan, public lands.
Okay. The time is seven fifty-seven. The Committee on Public Lands is now in session. Members present, Councilman Quagliani, Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Bruno, and myself acting as chair. We have before us tonight Communication E, from Corporation Council Lee Tierney regarding the potential sale, lease, or transfer of city-owned property located at twenty Helm Street and two eighty-one Front Avenue.
I'd like to bring this out.
I know, but he's not here. Alright, so...
Well, you have to bring it out.
Let me, I wanna bring that out favorably.
Bring one out.
Bring out, well, I'm gonna, obviously, I'm gonna actually hold it, because he's not here to discuss anything.
He's gotta be here. Motion, bring it out.
Tell me, motion?
Second.
Oh, there he is.
Where were you when I needed you?
He's eavesdropping.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, you're up.
So, we have a motion to bring it out by who?
Bring it out by Ron.
And I second it.
Second it.
So, is Quagliani, you're not in, oh, yeah, you are in the committee. I'm sorry. I'm looking at a wrong committee.
Yes, you are.
So, I'm so sorry. Oh, my God.
It's okay.
Who's on first?
Alright, discussion session. Lee, I'm gonna start you off, and then I'll leave it to our committee.
Yeah, so, the city was approached by local businessperson. They're leasing space in New Haven, and they're at a point where they either can get some area near their business to expand and store things, or they have to probably outside the city. So, I figured it was a good chance for the city council to look into a piece of land that's been vacant for a long time, and is either being utilized very little or not at all. And so, I'm bringing it to your attention and see what you wanna do. We have a draft notice that we can put pursuant to state law and your own regulations to allow for notice of the sale.
The committee, anybody from the committee have any? Yes.
It can't hurt. I mean, if we're gonna, if it's our property and we wanna...
It can hurt, I mean, if we're gonna put it out, if it's our property and we want to see what the market will bear, and we're gonna put it out to competitive bid, and we're gonna put a notice in the paper, and then we're gonna come back and look at what the bidders are, I don't think there's, I don't have any concern with that.
So anybody else have any, are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else in the committee have anything? Yeah, no, I'm okay with starting the process. One question I have, Lee, I know we're talking about a transfer station up there, maybe possibly. Is this going to affect that at all?
No. The problem with the transfer station there is you, because of, you can't expand into the landfill, right? They're not gonna let you destroy the cap. I am trying to foreclose on the front piece, but the reality is that you, if you built the transfer station, you're kind of at maximum capacity, and then you can't expand. We've had people in on transfer stations, whether you run them municipally or privately, and the size ranges are from two acres to nine acres. So you're really starting at, you know, it's almost like when they built 95 and the traffic patterns, it was already over capacity, you know, on the day it opened. So we are looking at other sites for a transfer station. We would present those to the council at the next meeting in conjunction with the Public Works Director, so that you know the city is on the same page.
Councilwoman Bruno?
Thank you. Lee, I thought that we've already started the process of getting a permit off of the Front Avenue site for the transfer station. I thought that we've already started the permit process at that specific location.
We haven't, but we will be pursuing permits for more than one site. One of the obstacles is that came up, that was not realized in the original analysis of the, of having a transfer station at that location. While it seems okay, proximity to any residence is an issue for wherever you locate the transfer station. So what is preferred is locating in an area where it has a certain distance from houses. So, you know, for example, if you had a 10-acre wooded lot, the state would want it in the center of the lot with the buff, you know, and retain the buffering of the wooded lot so that your residents wouldn't hear, see, smell, you know, have access to the transfer station. As you know, there are businesses in that area, but there's also homes in that area, too. And so the proximity of those homes are pretty close. And DEEP has to date not authorized a permit when there are homes that close. That doesn't mean we can have to abandon that. There will still be enough land, once the foreclosure is complete, to put a limited transfer station there. But if you don't sell the land, then fine, you could put the transfer station there or other locations. If you do sell the land, you can still put a limited transfer station there and still use other locations. But again, it depends on whether DEEP is gonna permit you to put a transfer station. And again, DEEP is telling us, they are very strict about proximity to homes, residences, as to where they will allow a transfer station. So we are exploring other sites that might be more applicable, and other sites where we could have some expansion if it has a success. I don't, I mean, I could tell you what sites they are, but it's better if I present that to the whole council where we're flying around with different addresses. I think it's always better if the council has that information in advance, so that you can have a proper debate on those sites. There'll be more than one site, and we will discuss those sites.
You all set, Councilman? Anybody else on the committee? While we have Lee here, I can open it up to everybody at this point. Anybody on the council, yes?
So, Lee, I just need a little personal clarification here, because I'm thinking back to what Mr. Carney said when we approved the ARPA funds. The application for, for the permit for a transfer station is a year process.
Correct.
So if we're looking at other locations, what is this gonna do to our timetable as a domino effect of ARPA money?
No, so we'll negotiate with DEEP when we submit that application. We're anticipating submitting that application in the next two weeks or three weeks. We want the council to be informed as to, obviously, the location. But, I mean, don't take mine for, you can go on the DEEP website. The first obstacle, if you will, is proximity to homes and residences as to where you can put a transfer station. So we want to make sure that we provide DEEP with all the different sites. I mean, we're also exploring, we now have possession of the landfill. We're exploring if some of that land might be properly utilized for a transfer station. They had, DEEP had expressed favorability towards that. So, you know, towards the end of Spring Street, your neighbor, for instance, your neighbors are the river and Spring Street, so, you know, and a big trash mountain. So there's a flat part there. So we're gonna throw that and some other sites in to see what DEEP, ultimately, you can't have a transfer station if you don't have a permit. So it's not just what the city wants, it's what DEEP will accept. So that's why we're gonna run it up, you know, three sites up the flagpole and see what they think is the best site. And then I'll come back, so that the council, you folks will have the final say. It's not gonna be what we say, but we don't want, we want to come back with what's doable, you know, what's actually gonna happen, and then we'll try to have it happen as quickly as possible.
Almost there, thank you. Anybody else on the council have any discussion concerns? Yes.
Thank you. So, Lee, this piece of property that's in question, is there gonna be some sort of a right of way or something for the folks that are gonna put the grids on top of this, the old landfill? Where they, is that how they would gain access to it? Through that parcel?
So you have Helm Street?
Yeah.
And then the idea would be to use the existing road that you see there and develop it maybe a little further. And that's gonna be done by the solar folks, they're gonna develop that roadway. So you wouldn't lose Helm Street. I mean, the other, you know, the other side of it, you have an encroachment on the other side by a business, and the idea would be to try to negotiate, you could evict them, but to try to negotiate at the same time a sale for that encroached site. I met with the folks surveying the solar field, and we've engaged them to survey all of the parcels here so that we know the exact boundary lines and there's no debate, so that we can get all that done at the same time.
Okay, I do appreciate your input. I think that we would totally need to do some research on this, because I believe that's where the police train to.
Yes, and I've met with the chief on that. The range being there is, we've discussed it with the solar folks, it's probably not optimal if the solar folks are driving there and going to the site. Whether it's permanent or temporary, it's probably gonna have to move. And we've already, I've already talked with the chief, and we will have alternative sites for that as well. Plenty of places where they can safely train.
Okay, thank you, nothing else?
All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor on the committee now? All in favor?
So, we're all in favor on...
Starting the process of notify and putting out a notification.
We're requesting a public hearing.
You're requesting, yeah.
We're gonna request a public hearing on this, which is, right, start of the process.
And you would like to request that?
For April 10 at 6:55.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One? Any abstentions? Seeing none, passes by majority. The time is now 8:10, your committee on public lands is now closed. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Okay, unfinished business.
Can I ask, Lee, something in unfinished business that wasn't financed? Lee, is there any update on the police pension?
Again, I don't want to steal the mayor's thunder on this, but I will say that meetings have been held. We have progress. The ball is, I'd say, 90% in the court of the police union members. They're figuring out just exactly what they can get approval for, you know, they're gonna have a formal vote. And we have a pretty tight schedule, so, you know, I would say you're gonna see something happen very quickly. But I get yelled at if I give you exact dates and they don't come up. But it is, you know, we've been meeting regularly, we've met again recently, and the ball's pretty, I, not, there's still actuary, as you negotiate, there's always a little bit of actuarial analysis just to finish up. If there's a tweak, you know, different than what we agreed to. But absent that little tweak, it's pretty much 90% in the ball, the court of the police union.
We're all sitting at the edge of our seats waiting for this.
It's coming.
Okay, all right.
It's coming, there, look, there are issues, oddly enough, as horrible as some people thought the 401K plan is, lateral hires like the 401K plan. So, you know, we have to factor that in and factor in, and there's different ways to implement it that, you know, that are coming up, so. But still, I mean, for your purposes, still, all models, still affordable, still quite affordable.
We look forward to seeing that, thank you.
Set? Unfinished business, are you all set? Councilwoman Hamilton, okay, committee reports.
Okay, we have Communication A from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment refunds for March 2023, which will be filed with tonight's minutes. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Stacy.
You're welcome.
And we are going into Finance Committee, Councilwoman Hamilton?
Yes, we have Communication C, which is being, is that C?
Aye.
Aye, that's being held, thank you.
Thank you. And now we're on Housing Planning and Recreation, Councilwoman Tucker. So yours.
To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on housing, planning, and recreations to whom was referred the matter of the naming of a 15-acre city-owned space, land located 285 Platt Avenue, Narrow Point Park. Reports that the committee went, the committee met on the 27th day of March 2023 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. The City Council of the City of West Haven has hereby approves the naming of a 15-acre city-owned space, land located at 285 Platt Avenue, Narrow Point Park.
Councilwoman Tucker has read Communication B into the record. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilwoman Tucker.
Thank you.
Now, with the Personnel and Civil Service, Councilman Quagliani.
To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on Personnel and Civil Service to whom was referred the matter of the reappointment of David Carr, 29 Lake Street, West Haven, Connecticut, 06516, to the Inland Wetlands Agency. Reports that the committee met on the 27th day of March 2023 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. The City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the reappointment of David Carr, 29 Lake Street, West Haven, Connecticut, to the Inland Wetlands Agency. Mr. Carr's reappointment will become effective immediately and expire on July 31, 2027.
Councilman Quagliani has read Communication C into the record. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Take it.
Communication D to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on Personnel and Civil Service, to whom was referred the matter of the reappointment of Chester Zantarski, 490 Jonesville Road, West Haven, to the Zoning Board of Appeals Panel of Alternates. Reports that the committee met on the 27th day of March 2023 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. The City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the reappointment of Chester Zantarski, 490 Jonesville Road, West Haven, Connecticut, to the Zoning Board of Appeals Panel of Alternates. Mr. Zantarski's reappointment will become effective immediately and expire on January 31, 2025.
Councilman Quagliani has read into the record Communication D. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're in, unanimously. Thank you, Councilman Quagliani.
Thank you.
Legislative Matters, Councilman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication D, January 23, meeting, we would like to withdraw.
Communication H has been withdrawn. And now our public lands, Councilman Donovan, you can reiterate what you're doing, 6:55.
Oh, yeah, we're requesting a public session, a public hearing on April 10 at 6:55 PM.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Doctrines and ordinance as the previous presented, any? No? Council ladies on reports? New business?
Aye.
Yes.
It has recently been brought to my attention that in the original ARPA plan that was given to us by the mayor, there was a whole bunch of stuff under the Health Department. It was $680,000. And I don't remember anyone talking about the $100,000 of that that was supposed to go toward mental health for our citizens. I know we talked about not having the vaccination clinic and everything here in City Hall, but I would like us all to think about for the next ARPA meeting, adding that $100,000 back in for mental health. I think it's really important, especially after COVID. I think there's a lot of people out there struggling, not just financially, but in other ways, that they need help. And I just want everyone to know that, that during the next ARPA meeting, I will be bringing that up for a vote. I don't like surprises. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilwoman O'Connor. Anybody else? Are set? Are here, and are adjourned? All in favor? We're in. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.